I've got seven o'clock. Call this meeting, regular Board of Education meeting, August twenty fifth, twenty twenty five. End of session. Nikki, please call the roll.
Yep, Nikki Austin, present. Jim Curran.
Present.
Mike Davis.
Present.
Mike Frosteth.
Present.
Nicole Josephs.
Present.
Teresa Keen.
Present.
Steve Mayer.
Present.
Terry Montgomery.
Present.
And Phil Bosberg is absent.
All right, first I know of is the approval of our agenda. Hope we have any amendments tonight, so it entertain a motion to approve our agenda for August twenty fifth for the Board of Education meeting.
Agreed.
Motion by Mike Frosteth, second by Terry. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
That was Nicole.
Oh, sorry. Second by Nicole. I don't amend.
No.
All in favor say aye.
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 Post's name, motion carries. Next up, we've got our consent agenda. Any items that Board members wish to remove from the consent agenda? Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve our consent agenda for tonight.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Nikki.
I'll second.
Second by Teresa. I'm gonna read these for the record. All right, item A is approved in minutes from our last meeting, eight eleven twenty five. Got two support staff resignations. Talia Liphart from Monroe High School and Angie Keepers from Abe Lincoln. One professional staff hire Hannah Ormsen, ELL teacher, Monroe High School. One support staff hire Scott Menahan, cook at Monroe Middle School. Got several donations to accept tonight. School supplies from Kathy and Jim Krubach. Stephanie Fletcher, supplies. Cynthia Villa Vicencio. Sixty backpacks. Community member donations through the Monroe Noon Optimists. Katrina Jackson and employees of Cleaver Books. Donation in school supplies, Monroe Noon Optimists, hundred and eighty dollars. Monroe Noon Optimists, five hundred dollars worth of student backpacks. Jim and Julia Yagi, fifty dollars. An anonymous donation of ten backpacks. Monroe Morning Optimists, twenty-five hundred dollars worth of new shoes. Parkside PTO, five hundred dollars. Samantha Aron and customers and employees of Walgreens and Monroe donation of supplies. And another anonymous donation of school supplies. Tom Depry, donation of school supplies. And finally, two donations to Backpack Buddies, thirty dollars from Marion Johnson and fifty dollars from Donald Junior and Bonnie Parker. Just wanna say a huge note of gratitude to all the folks who donated and all the folks who were out securing other donations. Getting other people to donate supplies and backpacks and dollars. Couldn't start out the school year strongly without you. Any discussion from the Board before we vote?
I'll just add that Jenna Tramey did a tremendous amount of work to help organize that. There are a lot of people involved, but I think Jenna in particular was really working hard to bring all of that together, so special thanks to her.
Thanks, Joe.
Question, Joe, with the Backpack Buddies? We see donations pretty much every meeting, which is awesome. I'm curious, you know, it was, I think, less than six months ago. We were worried about the fund balance in that not being able to carry the need. Where, how are we sitting with that right now?
I don't know. And Ron, I doubt, you've taken a look at that recently?
The top one ahead, I don't know, but I mean, at the time, we had a great reserve after the initial call went out. So we still have reserves, but I would have to look to see where exactly.
Yeah, but you're right. We were, we were in a month where we didn't know if we were gonna be able to make it work, and Ron stepped in to make sure that the program continued. But ultimately, once that call went out on Facebook last year, we received a tremendous response. So I would guess that the balance is pretty healthy, but we can certainly take a look and bring that back.
Now the data's back. Dana and Heather, we can look at that.
Yep.
Maybe we can give a little, just quick overview of what it is, cause I've been asked, you know, what exactly is Backpack Buddies?
Oh, right now? Oh, which we certainly can. I, yeah. So Backpack Buddies, for anyone that's interested, is a program where we put together bags of food items for students and families who are, have food insecurity issues, food security issues. And we do it in a way that provides support for those families and try to do it in a sensitive manner, so it doesn't stigmatize the kids. We make sure that they go home on the weekends and they have food. It's a tremendous effort that's put together by a number of volunteers within the community. As you can imagine, it's not just throwing a few groceries into a bag. There's a lot of inventory issues. There's the ordering, the planning. There's perishable items sometimes, and so to put all of that together in a coordinated manner really takes a lot of effort. And we have a lot of great folks in the community that step up. So certainly, the donations is a big part of this, but there's a number of other folks that are involved to make sure that if our kids have a need, they don't go home for the weekend hungry.
Thanks for explaining that.
Yeah.
Good question, Mike.
Thank you, Joe.
Any discussion? Okay, we've got.
But just saying thank you again to all the people who donate, because every week we get donations and we should make sure we thank them every week.
That's right. Okay, I've got a motion by, sorry, motion by Nikki, second by Teresa, to approve the consent agenda. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post's name, motion carries. Next up, we've got public comment. I've got nobody signed up. So we will keep rolling. We have no old business tonight. We've got a few, five items of new business. First up, got the two exciting announcements. First, first item is the approval of our ten-year sponsorship of the Launch and Collaboration Center. I'll turn it over to Joe and Ron to tell us about what's happening.
Yeah, this, this never gets old, right? We're really fortunate to be able to come to every Board meeting and celebrate a sponsorship agreement, and this one is an exciting one. This is with Thriven and Premier Financial Group. They have agreed to a sponsorship agreement, a ten-year agreement, to secure the naming rights for the Launch Collaboration Center. As everyone knows, our launch program is highly successful. It's built a strong reputation in the community and beyond within a short amount of time. And the space it's dedicated to launch, the launch program is beautiful. It's multiple, it's a large collaboration space, but then there's multiple meeting rooms as well. And there's some thought that in addition to launch, it might be used for some community meetings or other purposes, depending on what we all decide. But the fact that Thriven has stepped up and willing to sponsor that is really a big deal. And wanna thank Nikki Austin and Eric Hayworth for their enthusiastic support of this. They reached out to us. This didn't even take a lot of selling. They, you know, they really wanted to be a part of this project and knowing Thriven's mission and their work to give back to the community and everything they do just really aligns with this effort. So just really appreciative of their efforts and certainly Nikki, Ron, if there's anything you wanna add to that?
I think it'll be a great space, and so I'm really proud that we have a sponsor for it, because I think not only for the ability for those launch students and their community partners to meet, but I envision that space being available for a lot of other community meetings. It's gonna be a nice space in that high school.
Yeah, and a lot of the work that I've done in our community over the last fifteen years has been dedicated to economic development. And I'm really, really excited about what this program is doing and the energy and momentum that are being created around that. So we are very proud to partner and do this.
Just seems like a really, like a perfect fit. Like, when you think about what Launch stands for and what Thriven has done in this community and beyond, it's all about taking care of others, supporting cooperation, giving back. And it just feels like the perfect match. So we're truly very appreciative of the sponsorship opportunity and look forward to putting that center together in a way that makes Thriven proud, but also the community. I think we're gonna be in that space a lot, and it's gonna be gorgeous.
Do you need me to call the roll? Do I call the roll?
You just take a motion like normal.
Okay, got it. Any questions for administration? Okay, entertain a motion to approve the ten-year sponsorship and naming agreement with Thriven Premier Financial Group.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mike Davis and second by Terry. Any discussion before we vote? I'll just add my gratitude to Nikki and to Thriven and for, to Joe and the administration for keeping the momentum going. Really exciting to, it's very exciting to announce these every, every meeting and looking forward to the next one, too. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post's name.
And I abstain.
One I abstain.
Yep.
Okay. Next up, we've got the approval of a lifetime sponsorship of the Hall of Fame Yearbook Video Interactive Display.
Yeah, I'll turn this one over to Ron. I was involved in this one. Ron took the lead on the sponsorship agreement, so I'll let him talk about that.
Yeah, in a similar vein, we're very fortunate on this one. Rudy and, Rudy Burnett and Beth Abelman Burnett reached out to us that Janet Jan Abelman had an interest in doing something with the new building. And as you know, a lot of stuff is now filling up, right? And so we really didn't have anything in the sponsorship book that was necessarily meeting, you know, what some of their vision was. And so to give you some of the history, Bob Abelman, you know, former Board member years ago, former Board President years ago. A number of the, the family have gone into education, certainly, you know, Beth and Rudy, but, you know. And one of the daughters, I'm looking down to you, Steve, right? One of the daughters married to Mark, right? And, and Mark was a former Board President, so, you know, there's a lot of connections with that family to the school district. And so I, I brought up to them the fact that we're gonna have this video, not only Hall of Fame, but that's going to have the yearbooks of all the yearbooks that we have scanned in and available in it. So that it's there for the community to see, for students to look up and make fun of their parents or whatever they want to do with it. And they thought that that was a connection that Bob certainly would like and that the family would like. And so they're going to be sponsoring that installation at the high school. And it's a lifetime upfront sponsorship. Obviously, we'll have some ongoing cost as the monitor needs to be replaced and, and, you know, as we load new yearbooks into future years. But it's a great, great donation and a great sponsorship. And I'm glad they reached out and we're looking for a way to connect with the district in a, in a way that would make them proud. And so it's, it's a great, great thing.
Thanks, Ron. Any questions on this one for administration? I would entertain a motion to approve the lifetime sponsorship of the Hall of Fame Yearbook Video Interactive Display with Bob and Jan Abelman family.
So moved. I'll second.
Motion by.
Teresa.
Terry, second by Teresa. Any discussion before we vote?
I appreciate you finding the local things that, you know, weren't necessarily on the original list, but that people connect with.
That was just the same thing. That's really cool.
And another big thank you to the Abelman family. They're actually my neighbors growing up. Which oddly enough, Randy Gutenberg was my neighbor across the street. Connection, Twenty-Fifth Street, Monroe, Wisconsin.
Repin it hard.
Yeah. Proud of that community. But yeah, huge thank you to the Abelman family and, yeah, echo the gratitude for y'all getting creative to help them be a part of this generational project. With that, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post's name, motion carries. All right, next up, we've got our new, sorry, our Monroe High School building project update. I'll turn it over to Joe and Ron to kinda curate our guests here.
I'll let you take that, Ron.
Yeah, so we got, we'll start with Ryan and Tony doing the usual Board update. And then we'll get to Lynn doing some of the exciting furniture stuff. And I don't know, are we, I don't know that we have, we have the hard copies, I think, in the, in the board document for furniture. We don't do an interactive display, but we will have the, the, this month's tour during Tony's highlights. So if you have questions of what's going on or what's coming up, he will be able to share that. Project is going great. Obviously, we dealt with a little rain for a little bit, but now the weather's starting to stabilize and look good. And so hopefully, we've continued to make great progress. It's at the point of the project now where every day something happens. Where I'm either, you know, the one day I was out there and two days later someone calls and said, did you know the lights are up on the stadium? I was like, no, they went up there two days ago when I was there. And so it's moving pretty quickly. So I don't know, Ryan or Tony, which of you wants to start?
All right, are you gonna play the video?
Yep, John, I'll pull it up.
Is this a slow one?
Is this, which one do we have first, John? Is this the, just this month's? Or is this the whole? Okay, this is the whole thing? All right. We, we have both, so we'll, the first one we can just watch if that's the timeline one. This looks like this month's, actually.
All right, well, I can speak to this. We just wanna pause here and there. So as you can see out to the right side there, we got all the concrete curves in place and that, all that space right there in the front of the screen is, is about ready for pavement. We're targeting the week after Labor Day to do that. So everything except for just the east-west hall road on the south there, which is the bottom right hand of your screen, everything except for that will be paved with a binder course, which is the first course of asphalt pavement. We do need to keep that roadway open just for hauling some topsoil. So it'll be really nice to kinda get like, you know, ninety, ninety-six, ninety-seven percent of the site as far as drivable area paved. Roofing, we're wrapping up with the roofing now over in the auditorium area. I guess you can keep rolling. I can talk about that a little bit. So we still have that opening in the gym to get, kinda get in and out of there with some materials. Right at the bottom right hand of the screen, you can't really see it very well, but the tennis courts are developing. So we have fence posts driven down or they're in concrete for three sides of that tennis court space. It really looks, looks large when you're out there. Something to see. There's some good tennis courts and some fencing over on the practice field, which is kinda to the right. As you can see in this picture, the grant stands are in. They're installed. That happened fairly quickly. You can also see the poles, I believe, light poles, a hundred foot tall light poles that are up. And we're starting to see the track definition there off to the right hand side of the screen. So the track and turf field and all that's really coming together quickly. They're itching to get some more stuff installed. The goalposts are on site and ready to go up pretty soon here after we get some of the final grading done. Yeah, it's a lot, a lot coming together. If you wanna pause here, that, that portion of the building to the left there is the auditorium. That's where we're finishing up our roofing exercises. By the end of the week, we're sitting pretty good there. Linger into next week a little bit. Then you'll see the greenhouse in the middle courtyard there will start to develop over the next few weeks. That's the last structure that's really attached to the building that needs to be built yet. As you can see in the bottom, we've already got some grass growing, some plantings there, trees and shrubs and things of that nature. We're starting to get around the corners of the site. You can kinda even see at the top of the screen there. And top left, we just got, you know, grass starting to take, you know, starting to grow. So we actually had our first mowing this week, so a lot of the grass is tall enough where we're actually mowing it already, which is nice. So it's good to get that establishment.
And then, Tony, I believe the area is in green. Is it in September or October you're hoping to start getting the red pops on the building?
Oh, metal panels are actually coming in, I think, next week. So we'll see some of the metal panels starting to cover up that green, certainly by the end of September.
Yeah, so some of the people are like, I thought there was red on the building. It's, it's coming.
Yeah, it's coming, yeah. All right, I think that's really it. The inside, we're kinda shifting. The drone footage only really captures the outside, but I'm sure you all saw the, the project update. We kinda added a few extra pages of pictures there, and I'll just kinda explain what's happening on the inside. So our first area finishes, which is the classroom wing above administration, that's really developing. Paint is on the walls. We actually have the tile bathrooms completed in the staff work room. So it's, finishes are starting to go in, which is exciting. That tile crew is moving down to first floor over by the CTE expansion to get started next. Electrical switchgear came last week, so that fell right into place. Early on in the project, that was something that kept me up at night, just making sure that we get the switchgear in on time. The switchgear is the life of the electric, of the building electrically. So, you know, that was about fifty-two week lead time that we, we actually got accelerated and it showed up like within one day of when it was supposed to. So that, that's huge. We're trying to get that all wired up so we can fire that up in the upcoming weeks. It'll, it'll be a little bit, cause there's a lot of work to do with that, but it's here. That's, that's the main thing. Just drywall activities happening all over the place. Some stairways are finally starting to go in. We're finishing up kind of some of our last concrete pores, kind of surrounding the Performing Arts Center. The big concrete pores we have left would be the commons, kinda dragging our feet on that one a little bit, just because it's all polished concrete. We wanna protect it as much as possible, but it's getting to be about that time where we need to, we need to think about doing that. But yeah, the, the track railings came today, which is another huge thing. So once all the railings for the track and the gymnasium come, we'll be pouring that track concrete in the upcoming weeks. And there's some structural steel and catwalks going in place in the auditorium. So that's what you see in one of those photos is a bunch of catwalks up there. So we got probably another three weeks of work for steel in the, in the PAC, and then it'll switch gears over to some ductwork and things of that nature starting to go up. So yeah, that's, I guess, I'm not sure what's going on on site. Any questions?
Put red lights on those light poles in this, I'm mistaken.
Yeah, there isn't anything called out, I don't believe, but I was thinking about that as well.
With the proximity to the airport and looking at a water tower, I mean, I'm thinking they're just as tall as the water tower.
Yep, I was actually thinking about that last week, too. You should probably pose that question tomorrow at the core meeting.
Hundred feet's pretty tall when you're standing next to it.
Well, even when you're a distance away from the highway.
A mile and a half away.
When they went up in less than a day, right?
Yeah.
It was unbelievable.
Yeah, they rigged those in a certain way so that the ring drops down. You can get a lift up there to detach the ring, so then there's a laser on it that points right at the center of the fifty-yard line, so they're all pointed in the right direction. So yeah, it's, it's pretty cool operation to see, but yeah, it happened fast.
You good?
I think I'm good now.
All right, I'll go through, not a lot of change in the budget since the last time we talked. Probably the biggest change is I added some budget notes. Mike, when he was here last time, had some takeaways. And it was more about the question of, of where are overages covered from? Is it owner contingency? Is it a transfer? They cover the GMP, do we move it from one line to the next? Is it coming from the surplus of funds that are sitting slightly outside of the budget? So just added those notes, but we haven't had any change orders since last time we met. So not a lot of exciting things to talk about the budget, but in the sense of the overview, the referendum is fifty percent complete, which is pretty crazy and awesome, and, and we're, we're in a really good place. We also added some interior photos with our progress photos this time, knowing that you get a lot of exterior photos come your way. We were trying to pick up some more interiors so that you guys could see a, an update from that direction. But burn rate is good on owner contingency, not much change. Again, the budget, we're, other than progress in billings with the fifty percent complete in the referendum and the forty-seven complete for the high school and the difference between the two being Abe Lincoln is part of the referendum. And so probably the biggest change, and this is gonna be a punt back over to Tony, is that you see the CJ Schmidt Safety Score Card. And we were at a hundred last time we met and spoke about it, and we're at seventy-eight now, and so I'll let Tony address that.
Thanks. Leave the room. Drops a bomb in the water. Yeah, we, we're getting down to that point. Eighty percent is where we definitely wanna be above, above that, below, dipping down below eighty is a little concerning. But big picture wise, you know, there's about twenty-five subcontractors on site. We have pretty high safety standards, and to try to get all them on board and, and up to stuff is, is an undertaking. So we just have to tune that up a little bit. The good thing is the things we got docked on are relatively minor. The bad news with that is usually a multitude of minor things actually lead to something that could happen on site. So we're, we're well aware of that, and we have safety personnel on site every week, sometimes multiple times a week to do, to do tours, which is also contributing to, to some of the points we've been docked. So, you know, misuse of ladder, like somebody standing on the second to top ladder, that was some points that were docked. Some flagging on the roof. There's supposed to be warning lines with the flagging, and any gaps in that flagging, this is a warning system that if you get too close to the edge of the roof, that flagging will stop you, at least give you a warning. So there's some gaps in that that just need to be addressed. Believe it or not, some paperwork was one of the bigger, bigger docks. Point wise, there's a week with some missed paperwork, summary walkthrough, report from, from our group. So like I said, nothing huge, but just accumulation of smaller things. We'll be focusing on that. We already have been over the last few days, morning huddles with the group.
Any questions about that before?
I appreciate you guys proactively addressing it and the fact that you're so on top of it.
One thing I wanted to say, this is color commentary before we move on to furniture, is I've done this for a while and worked with a lot of school districts, and I have not seen such a variety and a dollar amount of contributions from the community, especially in a community your size, for a project like this. Like, the fact that you guys made a list and then completed the list and then had to make some more of the list. And that you have such a variety of people and, and companies and organizations that are donating. We've done this in the biggest school districts in the state and some of the biggest in Illinois, and I have not seen anything quite like this. So it's, it's super cool for me, and I hope it's super cool for you, because, because it's like, I think it's super inspiring, and, and I think it's awesome. So it's a lot of fun to see that, and it's a lot of fun to get updates from Joe and Ron about what's, what's happening on their end. And, and I applaud them for their effort and, and the responsiveness to that effort, so.
For sure.
Furniture? You wanna go into that room?
Yeah, I'll.
Can I go quick?
No, Tony, you have something.
Yeah, so I think there's a question. I missed last month, but I think there's a question on construction contingency. This is now a good time to talk about that. So everything Ryan had mentioned about owner's contingency is sitting on the owner's budget side. We also hold a construction contingency on the construction GMP side. So we've spent about forty percent of that, and as Ryan already stated, we're more like fifty percent complete. So we're spending it at a rate slower than what we are actually building, which is a good sign. It means, you know, if you were to make a forecast based on that information, you'd, you'd have about twenty percent left or so. So we're sitting in good standing there. We have been protecting it pretty well. We've even used some of those contingency funds for things that, you know, sometimes might not always be used for. So we've been evaluating that as we go on construction, are kinda letting some of that contingency go for things that wouldn't normally be considered contingency, but we just don't wanna get to a point where, you know, we have a bunch left over at the end and you wanna spend it as you go type of thing. So construction contingency is in decent shape, and we look at it every, every two weeks with the group here. I show a contingency report to the group at the owner-architect-contractor meeting, so it's something we talk about often. That was all I had.
And much like we, we talked in finance tonight about the, the Abe Lincoln project, and that was much the same way, where we knew we wanted to do the floor at Abe Lincoln in the gym because it was dilaminating. We knew we also had some painting in that gym that we wanted to do. But we had to wait to see if all of the key components that were designed into the buildings and the mechanical upgrades got done and were on budget before we were able to make that commitment to finish off some of those items. And so I think what they're foreshadowing is we're in a good spot with the budget right now. If we don't hit any, you know, unexpected hurdles between now and the end, hopefully, we'll have some of that opportunity at the end to look at some of those things that maybe at the start of the process, when we when we had to say, no, we can't do that right now until we make sure this budget's in line and the building's what we want it to be, we can come back and revisit some of those things.
Actually, before we go to furniture, I don't know what's in your order in your packet. Can we talk about moving vendors?
Actually, I think it's the other way around.
Lena's dying to get on the mic here.
I was gonna finish on the bag. She's here. Furniture. Linda asked me to talk and then hand it to her for questions.
Before we do that, right, are you good moving from from the high school building project update down to furniture?
Yeah, any final questions from the board on the high school update before we go into our next next item, which is an action item on the new high school furniture? On the new high school furniture.
Chandra, I told you you wouldn't have to pull anything up, but if you do have access to the attachment, we could pull it up and so.
Did did you all receive the attachment in your four docs? So probably the most important thing, did you look through the renderings?
Yeah, if you don't have them, that's fine, but I thought.
Yeah, I'd say that's what was the feedback. I think they look great, pretty pretty simple renderings and the and but I think they look amazing. The furniture looks great, the variety of furniture looks great, the commons is really impressive. You know, we talked, I don't know, a month ago, maybe a little, maybe two months ago at this point about furniture budget. And we were having the conversations about when we were having budget challenges at the conceptual phase of the project. And we had to find a lever to pull, we cut a lot of budget out of furniture. And as you look at these renderings, these are the reasons why if we had the opportunity, we want to add it back, right? For high quality, attractive, obviously furniture, very versatile and resilient, that can last for a long time. The the LMC looks amazing. The layout, the the colors, how it works with the carpet and the interior design, I think it looks great. And then we were talking earlier about launch, that's in here, typical classroom, you can see storage there and and versatile student seating that can be moved around. That we, you know, what better chairs in here than what the baseline was? The the labs look great, again, really flexible space. Chose not to go with the stools, but standing stations, again, for flexibility. And and you know, and we'll have an ADA area in here too. We were just talking about that today, about cabinetry. And then, yeah, the launch space. So again, awesome with the donations, this, I think this space is going to be amazing, super flexible. Think like, if any of you ever used a cowork space, it's 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 going to be similar to that where you can have small huddles or big groups or individual work or pull off into one of these side rooms for a for either a meeting or a teams like kind of zoom call or just a lot of variety that can you use in this space. I think it's pretty great. But to the nuts and bolts of it is we did increase the budget, as you guys remember, I just mentioned, to one point nine million. And after all of these spaces that total up here, we came in at one point eight eight. And so that's that's pretty great. We we hit our target and we didn't skimp. We got what we wanted and we've set the school up for success and we've set the school for longevity in furniture. So we're not, you know, ten years down the road handing off something that's that's in a tough spot. So I'll pause there because that's what I know about furniture. And I'll hand it off to Lynn and you all to see if you have any questions or if she has any comments to add.
I, it's just been a really, really fun space to design and just share a lot of these renderings internally at Demco. And everyone's just so excited to see these spaces come to life. So it's been really fun to work on.
A couple, three things I I would share is, you know, one is when you look at the common space. Certainly, you know, Jeremy had the vision that, you know, we would like the high school to in some parts of the day be able to operate more like a college campus, right? Where there's spots where students can hang out and 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 gather when they're not, you know, committed into a classroom. And so this gives an opportunity with a variety of styles of seating and opportunities for kids to meet and collaborate in different ways without just, you know, a row of lunch tables back in our generation that we might have seen. I think the other thing that I certainly wanted to give our staff credit for was they had a very good, I guess, eye or 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 thought process for controlling the budget as well through this process, right? I think they they communicated what they would like and what their needs were. But they also were sometimes the first ones to be asking, does that cost more? Because we could do it this way, right? And so I think our kudos to our staff for for being cognizant of and and wary of, you know, knowing that we had a number that we had to get to and a budget that was in place. And so I wanted to point that out. And then just in, you know, one of those areas when we we look at is like just in the typical classroom where originally we had looked at a couple of different styles of desks where we could pod or or create those spaces in different ways. And and the teachers basically said, what if we just make them all square? Then we can put them all together in any way we want at any time versus if some are trapezoids and some are squares, right? Then suddenly you start getting into some some dynamics there. And so I think things like that where our staff was like, yeah, we don't need, you know, what might look the coolest or or whatever, we we want what we what we know is functional and meets the needs of our classroom. But, you know, gives us that flexibility for not only our current kids and and staff, but also future staff and and students who are in those classrooms.
Ron, I just want to ask a clarifying question. We had already previously approved the increase of the furniture budget, correct? And so when it's listed in here, this isn't an action item, this is informational tonight only, correct?
We just need, if there's any concerns, we need to know now. Otherwise, we need to, right the point now where we would like to proceed with putting the order in. So again, it's within the approved budget, so we're fine with that. But if anybody has any concerns, now would be the time to express them. Otherwise, we need to get this furniture ordered and 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 get on our way with this process.
I have two quick questions. I I think there's lower seating in between the higher seating, correct?
Yes, in the in the commons, yes.
Yes. And then the other thing in the commons, are there charging stations within the tables and areas for students?
Yep, so there's a few separate ones kind of throughout, and that's for a couple of re, that offers a lot more flexibility.
Is that what that little ball is? Okay.
Yeah, yeah. It offers more flexibility than having it built into the furniture because then you're not locked down to that piece being in that spot forever. So with this, you have a lot more flexibility to move that around as needed, day to day or month to month.
Because that uh, because I wasn't sitting in on those meetings, Lynn, is uh, are those then chargeable, rechargeable ones, right? I believe, or?
So they're planned where the power is in the floor. Yeah, so they they do plug into the floor.
Because I know we looked at, we went back and forth both ways.
What's not shown is there's some furniture on the concourse when you go out to the football area. So there's some furniture out there not shown here. I mean, we just did a a random collection of snapshots of what we thought would be the the most variety of things to see. But there's clearly a lot of things that aren't shown in this that are that are great too. But I just want to point out there is outdoor seating there of a variety of of things.
Yeah, and then Terry also answered your question. So like in the middle, there's actually our logoed at the high school. If you go to the high school now, you see some of our logoed lunch tables.
Yes.
Those are coming, right? So so those are in the room as well.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. They're folded up in the picture on the side there.
When you get down to the far ends, you know, underneath like the the back of the that's what I'm looking for, PAC, there's more like low casual seating, much like you're seeing up front. And so, yeah, there's different spaces have different kind of personalities. So because not all kids are wired the same, right?
Well, I was just thinking about old farts like myself going in there. I don't want to sit on a high stool, you know, forever. But having the low seating.
Well, we can't sit too low either, Terry, right?
That's true. That's true. That's true. That's true. But I love the color scheme. I think it's awesome and it really screams Monroe High School.
And I know there was comments earlier in general about it's really white in there, like in the space, like the walls are white. And the renderings show polished concrete is white, which is not going to be white. But I think once you get furniture in the color, allowing the the furniture to do the heavy lifting on a lot of the color, I think is a really smart move and it keeps things very versatile moving forward.
I don't want to be the janitor that cleans that room.
Everything's very easy to clean, wipe down vinyls, very easy to clean.
Things removable. There's a floor scrubber. We're getting a floor scrubber, so all the things.
Is it stackable, like storable, most of the furniture? Or like how easy is it going to be for the teams to set up and move? And we like, I look at this picture of this room and it's it's a pretty multifunction space, right?
Yeah.
Out of curiosity.
Yeah, all like the stools are stackable, the chairs are stackable. The furniture's on glide, so it's not on wheels so that it's not sliding all over the place, but still really easy to move around. The folding cafeteria tables fold up and push out of the way. So everything is really easy to move around to to clean and rearrange as needed.
But you're right, Mike. I know Jeremy's talked about, you know, do we, do they consider using the space for like some of the dances or or stuff versus using the big the big gym, right?
Do we order like just exact or are we ordering extra? I mean, I assume high school kids are going to be hard on furniture. How easy is it to get replacement if we're not ordering more than what we need? Should we order extra? Do you usually see that from districts that they're getting?
Not typically. It's something that all of the furnishings are built for educational environments. It's all we do. They're built to last. And a lot of these furnishings were also piloted with the high school students, so kind of tested in your actual classrooms. So they're all really time-tested brands that we carry too. So very easy to get additional if needed. And then we also carry a lot of really great warranties too. So if anything happens, just give myself, Shawna, the Demco team a call and we we help make it right.
I asked a similar question, Mike, because especially when you get into like some of the custom colors, right? Or, you know, and but it's always a push-pull because because like Lynn said, they're working with companies that they work with regularly and and that they, you know, product lines that they use a lot versus we also don't have a tremendous amount of storage, right? So if we buy too many spares of each thing, where do we keep them? And so, but yeah, that was exactly my mind because it's like, you know, what are the odds? You'll get that exact same red, but at least you guys have that red identified, right? And so we know what it is.
So we're gonna just formally I guess, take take the vote to approve this tonight since we've got it in the agenda. Any questions from board members before we take action here?
Was there anything that we weren't getting that we kind of put on a hold list for financial wise that maybe we want to look at putting in with that remaining balance?
I don't know if there was anything specific. I'll, Lynn, I'll lean towards you. I will say like, I think getting along those lines, one thing we know we have furniture like as you head out onto the patio, kind of more closer to the building, like for students, if they want to step outside and take a break. I think there's certainly if there's additional dollars that allowed, we might get some additional furniture out on the patio that then is placed more around the concessions and and toward the back of the seating, like where some of the handicap seating is. But it's not something that we have to do like right now, right? So, yeah, I don't recall anything else that, you know, certainly if we would have kept to the budget that we had cut back to and hadn't made the, you know, reallocated it back to where it originally was kind of sitting, we would have had some issues because, yeah, then we would have been making some of those decisions still that would have really probably hurt.
Now, we'll say we do have a line item in the budget called miscellaneous loose furnishings. And that is a lesson learned for us that once you get into the space, you learn that you're missing some things that you wouldn't have known until everyone operating in the space gets in there. So it's kind of our holdback line item. It's fifty thousand dollars, so it's not a small amount of money. If we don't use it, it'll roll back into the general fund of the budget and we can allocate it in different ways. But just from our aspect, we've we've learned a lot of times, once everyone gets in the building. And you guys have a really unique situation where it's it's coming online in late spring and then you have the summer until school starts that you can have a big soft opening essentially and experience the space and actually give yourself some time for procurement before students come if you find those things. So we do have a line item to help support that.
So along with the furniture, there's like some of the storage spaces, cubicles that are included in the furniture or not?
Like systems furniture, like office?
Like a cupboard, cupboards or I, like in the typical classroom, there's like a storage cabinet and a bookshelf that's included in the furniture?
Yes, yep. There are some spaces where there's built-in cabinetry that's part of the construction package. But then there's mobile storage pieces in the classrooms that are part of the.
Every classroom will have some storied space. It varies. There's there's a lot of involvement from the staff on sharing their wants and desires for those spaces. And Jeremy did a great job of wrangling all of that feedback, working with Lynn and Shawna to make sure that we we got what we needed. The short answer is, yep, it's going to be in there.
Yeah, and I, to echo what Ron said earlier, again, another thing that's been unique with our experience with the row is your staff's general just, yeah, if we can't afford it, let's not do it, kind of approach where sometimes we get the exact opposite of that with with staff occasionally in other areas. And so we've almost had to be like, no, 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 we want to do this. Like this is something that you will want. You don't have to bring your old bookshelf. It's fine.
Well-conditioned to the budget constraints.
That is a good question, Steve. I know, you know, anytime, it could be me, it could be teachers, whoever, anybody who's been in a classroom space or whatever for a long time, you accumulate some stuff and everybody's like, where am I going to put it all, right? And well, some of it is, you just got to let some of it go, right? But but that is a real thing. And so that was one of the other areas that we added with some of the additional dollars was we put in some additional storage spaces in those classrooms. And I get kind of echoing what Ryan just said there. I think that's one thing when we get into the spring and all the furniture's in place and we've modeled it, but when you're actually in there and looking at it, it it might be if it makes sense to add some more storage, maybe we can do it at that point in time. Because, you know, there is, I've never heard anybody complain, oh, I've got too much storage in my classroom. Sometimes it's all right to keep it a little bit constrained. But I also understand like if, you know, if you have sets of books and you're you're only handing them out and using them for, you know, a part of the school year, yep, you gotta you gotta store those books for the other parts of the year somewhere at some point in time.
Good questions. Okay, so I would entertain a motion to approve the new high school furniture with Demco as presented.
So moved.
Second by Steve. Any discussion?
It was Steve, okay.
Any discussion for the vote? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries on to our new high school moving vendor.
So we went out with an RFP to three vendors that our company has had success with. One of them, it's been a while, but when we did use them in the Milwaukee area, it went really well. But the other two that we've had very recent success with. So we we gave them a scope of services. They took a tour of the existing high school, a guided tour of the existing high school to understand that scope. And they were charged with putting together a a time and material with a not to exceed number. And so they did. And then when they were told to describe what that bought, how many hours of labor and material, what type of materials were going to come to help the moving process. We also charged them with a detailed labeling and organizational system that they are in charge with teaching to to key staff so that we understand that, also providing best practices for packing and then all the materials to do those things. And so out of the three, after discussion, Ron, Joe and I and Jeremy, we decided to go with C. Coakley. There are fifteen, I bet, Coakley moving companies in the state of Wisconsin, so don't get confused which one you're talking about. But C. Coakley, not because they were the lowest price, but that they were the, when you looked at the hours that they offered as an allocation for the move, it they had the lowest price per hour. If you broke it out, their total proposal divided by the amount of hours and days that they were going to. And it gives the best flexibility and with it being a TNM not to exceed, if they don't need all of those hours, we won't pay that full amount. And with it being a TNM not-to-exceed, if they don't need all of those hours, we won't pay that full amount. Um, and so, and we have had very recent success with them. Um, and so that was our decision to move forward with C. Coakley, uh, to do the moving. And, um, and once we release them to do that, then we'll start scheduling it and finding what the perfect times are and all those type of things. But right now, that's, uh, that's where we are.
Yeah, when you think about doing a walkthrough, like on a move, like when you're talking about a high school, and this is kind of where I, I think Jeremy and I, who were, did, were part of that, uh, we're advocates for getting the more hours. Like you walk into a shop and you got what you can see, right? And we know that we're probably going, or we are going to be working with Faith Engineering on moving some of the large pieces of the equipment, but you can see the tools that are out in sight, but you don't know what's stuck away and all the other cabinets and, and everything in the place. And you can tell them that, yep, we're going to try and get through some of our inventory stock, but you know that we're going to have a, a bunch of boards and a bunch of, uh, uh, iron and, and, and welding wire and stuff at the end of the year. And they're just guessing, right? They're like, okay, they throw a number at it, right? And it would be really easy for them to say, something's out of scope because we didn't know that this specific item was moving and that would have been X dollars. And so, um, having lived this life a little bit, um, I have a much greater comfort level knowing that I'm going into it with a bigger allocation of hours, uh, in there, uh, and so that gives us some wiggle room and some fight. Uh, if somebody says, well, this wasn't in the scope, we didn't see this in the walkthrough, well, yep. And some other people said that was going to be a lot less hours, so you can build this into your scope. So, um, that's why we're recommending, uh, C. Coakley, even though they're, they're, uh, the highest net cost upfront, but they're the, far and away the lowest when you look at the amount of hours that they're allocating, uh, for the, for the cost proposal that they gave us.
They've been pretty good on their hours because it just seems odd that their hours are almost double the Coakley Brothers.
Yeah, and I felt, well, I, I would say it's more odd that Coakley Brothers was so low, in my opinion. Um, that was the thing that stood out to me was, um, that it was a very low allocation. My only thought is they're coming from Milwaukee, they may be looking at it as we're sending, we're going to really just attack this thing and, and try to get it out, which could be a good thing, could be a bad thing, it's hard to know. Um, where, uh, C. Coakley is looking at it, it may take us more time. Um, but what I've learned with moving vendors is honestly, you want it to take a little bit more time, um, for the sake of the new building and the sake of all the stuff being moved. And, um, and so I would say, I, do I feel like C. Coakley estimate a little high? Sure, I do, um, they're probably just, you know, being a little conservative, just to make sure, like all the, they're thinking that the same thing as Ron's thinking about, right? Like what did we not see? Um, but I would say the odd man out on this one was actually Coakley Brothers and that they thought they could, it was concerning that they thought they could do it in such a small amount of hours.
And if they do do it in less hours, they're not charging us, it's whatever that hourly rate is, that's what it'll be. So if they end up at six hundred hours, then that's what the fee will be.
Yep, and Alex from our team will be on site, um, during move operations and, um, one, giving assistance to whatever they need, information they need, or any of those types of just coordination. Um, but also giving some feedback on how long people were working, how many people were there that day, um, how did it go? You know, those type of things, so we can get real-time feedback in that week or so window of work with the, uh, key point person who's managing it, their project manager, so we can get real-time feedback during the process and not just wait till it's all over and say, hey, that was, that was a mess, you know? More like, hey, you guys had a rough morning, I talked to you at lunch, what, let's figure this out for the afternoon, that kind of real-time feedback, so.
Yeah, and I would just say from the walkthrough, I mean, I think there's people who do this every day, right? And I'm sure there's plenty of them who could walk into the room and glance at this room and say, yep, it's this many hours, and walk out, right? But when you have somebody else who's asking the clarifying questions of, do we need to take down the monitors and move those as well? Is the sound system going? Uh, you know, I might trust their hours a little more, uh, you know, than, than someone who's just, you know, saying, eh, I think this will be a good hour.
Are they moving stuff that we're not using in the high school? Or are we going to put that on the auction website? What are we doing with all the old desks and things like that?
Yet to be finalized, but yes, whether it's an auction, whether it's the auction website, whether it's a, a large garage sale, schools have done all three, uh, but yes, they, or no, they won't be moving stuff, we're not clicking to the new building. But yes, we will be coming up with a system to, to, to make that available to the public if, if they're interested. Um, but there is stuff like, there is, if you go into the vaccine shop, there's an entire balcony of, of storage, of like sets and costumes and things of that nature that they have to get down to the, to lower levels so that they can take it out, right? So there's, there's, there's a lot of, and, and like I say, when you're, when you're going through some of those tech ed spaces, there's, there's a lot of tools and the equipment and stuff, and so it's not only just, you can't just throw it all in a box because then it becomes unwieldy on the size, but you also have to kind of keep them together so that when you're putting the room back together, you know, this box is this set of tools, so that they're not all intermingled. So there's, there is steps to the whole process.
I would say there's a few things that they aren't moving, um, they won't move hazardous or flammable chemicals. So if the science department has any of those, um, you'll either need to make other arrangements or move it yourself. Um, we'll have a different firm yet to be determined, but two people have looked at it, or one person bringing a price back, we already have one price for moving, um, a scoreboard out of the gymnasium, current gymnasium, and the scoreboard from the football field. Um, so that will be a different effort. Uh, Faith Technologies is going to do a big heavy lift in, for CTE equipment. Um, and then, um, we will have the, the person or the group providing, um, exercise equipment for the, the fitness room, um, is going to be moving the existing fitness, uh, equipment, uh, from the old school. So it's a joint effort as the move as a whole, um, but the lion's share of what we consider a school move is happening, um, with, would be with C. Coakley.
Thank you.
Yeah, so there'll be a lot with both teachers, classrooms, but also like coaches in sports, getting, getting their stuff organized for the move.
Was the price submitted, like, just hours and cost?
Let's say it one more time, sorry.
So like when they submitted the price, was it, I mean, just based on it's TNM, TNM not-to-exceed, this is your price, this is the number of hours?
Yeah, and there's also, what I didn't throw in there was, uh, equipment and supplies, um, just because I thought it wasn't as pertinent as knowing what the hour allocation was for the effort. But they, there are costs for all of their, um, crates and speed carts and, um, right, they're gonna, giving tape and bubble wrap and bags for, uh, technology and, and all the specialty moving supplies, they'll be providing all those. That was built in their cost, and then that was broken out for everyone else too.
And I guess where, where I'm getting at is, I see this as that they likely bid, like if it, for anchor, if it goes over four hundred and sixteen hours, that's out of scope, that's an extra, even though it says time and material not to exceed. If the hours exceed, that's beyond the scope of their.
And that, and. When you don't have the scope, you know, really tightened down, when you don't say it's X boxes.
It becomes very easy to point at something and say, I didn't know about that, that's why we've exceeded the hours.
So hours are super important and I'm, I, I'd almost say it's, it's worth asking for, um, C. Coakley, what is your TNM rate if we exceed the hours, so that we can have that built into the contract right away?
Well, I will call, I'm calling Matt soon as the meeting's over to let him know that they got it, uh, because he want, he asked, just let him know either way. And so, um, I will let him know when we leave, and I will ask for that too, to see. I mean, I will say, in, in it, it's broken out, their hourly rate is broken out, not, because this is full amount, just divided by the hours. Their actual hourly is broken out, but I'll ask if, hey, if we go over and become the change order, then what, what was your, what would your rate be if we became a, a change order?
Because I, I mean, four hundred hours is, to me, ridiculous, I mean, that's ten guys, one week.
Yeah.
That, there's, yeah, there's no way, there's no way that happens in four hundred hours.
Yeah, semi-driver in addition to, you know, the movers and others.
Yeah, we have, I think there's four trucks, three vans, like I, I forget how it all breaks out, but it's a big effort from a lot of people, and so.
This is like outer buildings too, like some of the, like athletic storage and all that?
Yes.
I, I think there's a risk we go over even with the seven hundred and twenty hours, so I think it's important to protect ourselves for what that overage could be.
I would agree.
Because you think of like high jump pits and stuff like that, that's, that's big stuff that fills a, fills a truck itself in no time, it's not.
I will say to, to C. Coakley and specifically Matt Tranquita's benefit, I went through a very hairy move, uh, with him two summers ago. Um, and they were absolutely the most flexible on just being like, hey, we're here to get it done. Hey, we're not, we're not looking for a handout, we're looking for, just to get this done and you guys to be happy at the end of it. And I really appreciated that about his mentality and, and his team, so it, it went really well. It, it was a mess when he inherited it and ended up, he, he took it from someone else and, um, and he, he cleaned it up, so.
All right, so we've got a recommendation from Huff McKeel from the administration, uh, to go with C. Coakley as the new high school moving vendor, is there, entertain a motion. Motion by Mike Frosset.
Second.
Second by Terry, to for the new high school moving vendor, C. Coakley as presented, any discussion before we vote? All in favor?
I appreciate that you said that Alex was going to monitor this, because that was my biggest concern. You know, I mean, they put forty people out there, who's going to keep track of their time?
It's definitely not a set it and forget it.
I appreciate you guys overseeing that, yeah.
Absolutely.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you very much.
Have a great day.
Yeah, thank you, thank you.
Thanks, guys.
You too.
All right, we've got a couple, it's uninformational items, we've got, um, a couple of things in, in boardmanship and administration. We'll go first on the boardmanship side. Um, so, uh, last meeting we talked about, um, taking a next step with the executive committee, uh, as kind of a follow-up to the presentation from WASB, so I'll give the board a quick download and, and kind of what's coming next and, and give folks a chance to ask any questions before Joe's got at least one update on the administration side. Then anybody else from executive committee, please jump in and, and add what I missed. Um, so one of the biggest, uh, points of emphasis that we heard from, uh, from Randy at WASB was that community engagement really matters for any kind of superintendent, uh, search and selection process. And so we heard that and sat down and, uh, decided that we wanted to do, uh, a set of focus groups that'll be led by board members in the month of September, at the latest, early October. And so we're going to do a, a student focus group, uh, two staff focus groups and two community focus groups, one focused on the business community, one focused on, uh, parents within the district. And the, the purpose of this is to build the profile, uh, that we are looking for in our, our next superintendent. So I want to be really clear, the executive committee did not, uh, make a decision or try to make a decision on the option that we think the board should pursue, uh, between kind of going with an external search firm, uh, opening up a search and running it internally, or going with an appointment, that's not a decision that we're trying to make tonight or that we're advocating for, for any of those things. There's a, a profile building step that we believe is im- important to start with community engagement to help, uh, define, uh, the profile of the next, uh, district leader here in Monroe. And so we've got, um, five focus groups that are going to be on the calendar and we're working on the kind of operations and logistics to get that set up. Um, each one will be led by a member of the executive committee, and then we'd love to have, uh, at least one other board member, potentially a couple other board members join each of the meetings. Um, and so as a next step, uh, I'll send this out to the board, kind of the dates, the, uh, the details. Um, but wanted to give you all that update, uh, coming out of our executive committee meeting. Just a big thank you to Nikki and Teresa and, and Terry, who were, um, who gave up their time to, to kind of work through this together. So let me pause and see if there's any other executive committee members who want to add anything I missed.
I think you did a good job, good summary.
Great, any questions from other board members on that kind of path forward?
One of the things I have been hearing, um, and it was again today when I was at the senior center, that people are wondering, are we going to come out and start talking to the community again? And there were four or five people at the, at the senior center that would like to have it down there, so if we, if we're looking for someplace. But that was one of the questions, you know, they want to know about the new school, they want to know about the superintendent posting, you know, how things are going and all of that, so I think this is going to be a perfect fit in. I think it's really what they're looking for, so.
I understand that, Mike. Other questions?
Um, you mentioned students, staff, it was one students, two staff, and then two parent? It's going to be, okay, it's going to be full community, not just two parents of students, but the whole community.
So right now, the, the breakdown is a, a student focus group, two staff, where one will be a kind of professional and classified staff, the other would be with the administrative team. Um, and then for community, we broke it down by business community and, uh, parents. And of course, there's crossover in each of those audiences, but the, the idea is that most of these will be by invitation. So it's not going to be kind of a, an all-call, um, anybody show up who wants to, um, but going to build a list and get invites out, um, to try and keep it at a manageable size so we can get real meaningful feedback and discussion.
What are you thinking?
I'm, I'm worried about that part right there, um, because you've got your business people, which, you know, definitely need to know what they're looking for because, you know, they help support us. Um, the parents are obviously the parents of, you know, what we're, what our goal is, is to, you know, educate the students. But there's also, you know, grandparents and other community members that are also, you know, really a, a huge part of the buy-in to the school district, that might not fit any of those, but we should get their opinions as well.
I'm into what Mike just said.
Yeah, it does.
I would, I would totally agree with you there.
There's a demographic then that's missed right now with what, with what we've listed, so we may need to add.
Yeah, that might be something you want to consider as, as far as expanding at least one of those, you know? And like you said, with the parents, and I can totally understand that, but I think there's another whole group out there in the community that, you know, they're, they want information, you know, would like to be part of it, so.
Yeah, some grandparents are, you know, with the kids after school, helping them out, and you know, they're just as involved and, you know, neighbors and every, you know.
I would agree, but there's some crossover. When you say community, that includes parents, just like there's crossover with the teachers. There's parents who are in the teacher group, there's parents who are in the administrative group, so I don't know. Because we were trying as an administrative group to not make it be, let's have ten different groups that we're speaking to. So, I mean, but I think every effort should be made that that second community group include a lot of parents and grandparents.
For the record, we have two public board meetings every month, where we invite the community in here to join us and we dedicate time for public comment. If you'd like to know what's going on, please join us and, and sign up for public comment. We're not, we're here twice a month regularly.
I, while I completely agree, I also think it's a little different, right? We're not, that's not engaging in a conversation, that's not like engaging back and forth. I absolutely agree, like absolutely come, but there is, I think there's a different purpose for some of those, but I, yes, I agree.
So maybe what we could do, just to, there's no reason why we have to limit the set of meetings to what, what we just described. We'll start with what we came up with as executive committee, if anybody on the board would, would want to recommend adding one, I don't think we need to go through a formal process to do that, right? And so we can entertain adding another meeting in, in early October or late September. And I just want to, I've kind of aligned to Mike's point, we wanted to strike a balance of hearing a good subsection of the community and understand, we're not going to be able to talk to everybody, right? We're not going, we're not going to talk to two thousand people. Um, and so we wanted to be respectful of people's time at the same, you know, kind of strike that balance. So if that, Nicole, does that meet your, your interest?
Yeah, I was just saying too, you know, just make sure those, obviously, um, your community ones with parents or business, you know, like your time of day too, just to, you know, make sure it's accessible, because obviously some parents work PMs and evening and night shifts and whatnot, might, might usually hit that, you know, like six PM time that you want to set those meetings for, you might need to do something a little, you know?
Yep.
Because we do want to make sure we're getting this profile from everybody that's involved and, you know, ideally, it's everyone in town.
Appreciate that.
Do we have any community listening sessions scheduled in the future? We don't have any right now, but that's on our list to do. We certainly have a, a number of, uh, spaces that we're targeting. We, we did say we want to revisit, uh, the senior center, we want to get into the Y in their new space. Um, we'd also like to host a couple, um, within the school district facilities as well. So at this point, we're waiting to get the school year started and get it rolling again, and then once we got everyone settled in, then we, uh, really what Jim and I have talked about is, and I think the board, the larger board has as well, create just this annual cycle of listening sessions, make it a part of our regular practice, because I think all of us have felt that even though maybe.
Because I think all of us have felt that even though maybe they weren't always attended as well as we would have liked, there was always value in the conversations that we had. And, and if we can build that into a regular practice, there's a lot of value there.
It's a good opportunity for the whole community, business people, senior citizens, parents, anybody. And I think that's what, that's what the people want. They want the opportunity. And like you say, they haven't been attended real well. But the one at the senior center, there was a fair amount of people there. And they were very engaged, you know? They were very curious about things and, and Joe did a wonderful job of explaining things. I mean, maybe it can't go down the same road as what we're looking for the superintendent requirements, but I'm sure that that conversation is going to come up there. If you have a listening session, say in September, early October. So, I mean, it may be a good time just to float it out there, you know, and schedule one.
And, and we'll flex depending on whatever the board feels is appropriate. Obviously, I'm trying to steer clear and honor what you guys are doing so it doesn't look like I'm like trying to force something. But, but certainly, you know, I'll work with Jim to take whatever feedback and guidance you all have. And once this part of the process is established, then I think we can get into scheduling some of our regular listening sessions. So, are you going to do it? I like doing those things. I like the fun, actually. So we'll get it going whenever you guys are ready.
And Jim, something we didn't talk about though, but to make sure that we are involving parents and grandparents, maybe the YMCA would be a great place to hold one of our community meetings.
Yeah, that's the plan. We, we have a meeting scheduled with Trent Henning from the Y next week, I think it is. Can't remember. It was next week. Yeah, and that's one of the things we're going to talk to him about is getting on the schedule and coordinating that, so.
Okay, thanks, everybody. Joe, you got the administration?
I do. Just to give you an update on some internal transfers. Vicki Hoffman is going from Northside transferring to the high school. Wanted to take advantage of an opportunity that was opened up by a resignation. So we're excited for her to be able to jump into that new position. We also have Janessa Newingham, who previously, her position was reduced as a part of the budget reduction plan that we approved last year. So we're excited that Janessa's able to jump into a special ed aid position that was vacated by an aide that is now becoming a special ed teacher for us, Dylan. So some good news there, some things are falling in place, so we're excited about that. The only other thing I wanted to add is, as most of you know, we launched our new school district Monroe website. We're super excited about it. Chandra has put it up on the screen. If you haven't had a chance to navigate it, play around with it, please do so. If you see anything that you have questions about or think is missing, please let us know. I do want to give a quick shout out to Heidi Witt. Heidi has done a tremendous amount of work to get the site mapped on, get this going. There's been a number of people that have been involved in the vision for this, but Heidi's really provided the horsepower to get it done. So hopefully you all feel that this is good. I think it's a clean, modern look that we were going for. And we're excited to use this in combination with some of our other parent square tools.
I was in there this week. I think it looks great and it's easy to get around in it. I, I love it.
Yeah, the video that you see here, that's, that's the placeholder right now and we really like, really like it. But we also want to integrate some, some video with some of our younger students and teachers from the elementary and middle school and capture some video of Monroe and there's leaves on the trees and green grass and all the things that make things look pretty. So this is what we have based on a visit. I think this was from April, but we've got another one scheduled for the first Friday in September. So it'll be great.
Awesome. Thanks for all the work on that. Appreciate the update. Okay. Board of Education correspondents, I don't have anything here. Let's do committee reports. Nicole, we'll start with you.
Yeah, you had their pickleball tournament. It was great, well-attended. I think it will become an annual affair and we're very happy with how it turned out. And God was watching over us because it rained between the coed tournament and the family tournament. And then it stopped and we, we swept the courts off and it dried up and they were able to play. So it was, it was great.
Do you think you'll shoot for the same time of year?
No.
Okay.
It was really, really hot. But the reason we did August was because we wanted to do it. And with the courts not being done until July and the Fourth of July tournament, that was kind of our first opportunity to do it. We're meeting in October and we're probably going to look at like May or October.
Thanks, Terry.
Yeah.
Teresa.
Well, thank you.
Mike F., Steve?
Mike and I attended that intergovernmental meeting last week and with the city and several local townships and county reps. It was, it was more about sharing, you know, your assets. And it didn't really include the school district that much, although they did bring up that they had talked to Ron Parkinrec, I guess, about possibly working with them to maintain some of the field, help with the fields with equipment and stuff. So, I mean, the bottom line is, you know, they want to share things, you know, instead of everybody doing their own thing. And I mean, a snowplow really can't, I mean, like I said to Mike, they're not going to, we're not going to share a snowplow. But, you know, there's, there are things that we could probably do down the road. But one interesting comment that the girl made, she said that in all the surveys that they've, studies that they've done for different municipalities in southwest Wisconsin, the one driving factor that was common in all of them, if the school district was successful, the community was successful. So kudos to you guys. I mean, Joe, you're doing a really good job. I mean, we, we've got, I think, a pretty good school district. So, I mean, it, it leads a good path forward for the rest of the community, so.
Was that Ellen Tyler who was, okay, yeah, she's great.
Yeah, she was out at the Y when they did that study out there.
And we, we do, I mean, with the, between the reciprocal we have with, with the Park and Rec, I mean, we're, you know, they use our facilities for some of their Park and Rec programming. Meanwhile, we're using the softball fields and have for years, right? And they do a great job maintaining those that we're, you know, right, that we're using right now. But we're also, they're, they're really good. I mean, if we, you know, the, as we get to back to school time, we usually have them come through and sometimes they'll sweep our lots for us. And so we do a pretty good job here of, of working back and forth together. And yeah, we've had some of those conversations, both with the new baseball, softball complex of, and even some of our practice fields of them having some want and use of them, but then also them potentially being able to provide some expertise and support when it comes to maintaining some of those areas for us. So I think it's only, it's great that we're having these conversations and hopefully it'll continue and grow. I will say, Northern Pines, we actually did have, the county did some snowplowing for us, which was interesting. But they had a lot of snowplowing equipment up in Eagle River, obviously. But you, you, we weren't always a priority though.
Thanks, Steve.
Thanks for going, guys. Appreciate it.
All right, then, executive committee met last week, provided that, that update. Like I said, I'll get notes out to folks with an opportunity to, to sign up for one of our focus groups. With that, move on to agenda items for future discussion. I've got a question for the board here. So I think, I'm going to paraphrase our conversation, Joe, but I think we went into our, our budget reality a couple of different times over, over the summer. And we need to move the conversation forward on kind of what we, what we want to do. And so I wanted to see from, from the board, kind of what, what would you like to see next from the administration to help us kind of weigh in as a board on what next steps we might want to take?
So I believe we had asked for administration to bring us back, you know, the, what we need for, what we need to ask for from the community if, if we want to support, you know, the district going forward. Because what we asked for the last referendum, I don't know is enough, right? And alternatively, as we look at that, what, what type of cuts and what does that look like if we don't get or ask for that? So I think we had left it as a board in admin's board to bring some of that stuff back.
Yeah, so from our perspective, we've done some work. We, you know, I think we're ready to start talking about timeline. I think for us, there's a little bit of chicken in the egg in terms of the number and, and some of the reductions that we can sort out. And Ron, I don't know if you have any thoughts on that?
Yeah, I know, we had put together a timeline, I, you know, and it was, we can share that whenever. I think that was partly one of the first asks and that was based upon if we were going to have another interim conversation. But we can also just share the timeline. I think the, we have to kind of get to the point where we at least know where this third Friday count is and where this year's budget is landing before I can really be confident in projecting out next year a little bit. But in the interim, we can certainly be working on what those reductions are and having those conversations so that quickly by late September, early October, we can really be having some of those conversations as to what a number and/or reductions might look like. Ultimately, to have a look at the timeline in a couple, three weeks now. But ideally, I would, you know, prefer that the board either have a resolution passed or at least come to consensus on what the resolution is by the December meeting so that we don't lose December, right? So as we, it's okay if we know what we're doing and we don't adopt that resolution till the first meeting in January. But at least it would be nice coming out of that December meeting to know where we're going if we haven't actually passed the resolution itself. And so that would be my, my kind of want. And that means that in October and November, we're going to have to have some of those heavy conversations.
Because the deadline, what in your mind would be January to pass that resolution if we decide to go to referendum in April?
Yeah, the real deadline, I think, is, it's kind of like the last go-around where it's like the Monday after our, our second meeting in January.
Okay.
But ideally, we would hopefully know where we're going a little bit before then, so.
So maybe for our next meeting, if we just, if you just share kind of the rough timeline of where we're at, it might be a good, at least beginning step.
Yeah, we've had that sketched out, so we can do that.
We have to go there. And then I think with regard to some of the reductions, I think the board is aware that there's some sensitivity around that. I think our, our intent is absolutely to be very clear with the board and the community as to what reductions would be necessary to get to whatever number is, is determined. We just want to make sure that we build that, that list and communicate that list in a way that doesn't catch our staff off guard, if that makes sense, right? And so I think, you know, one of the things that I'm going to be talking about with the staff on Friday is that we have a lot to celebrate, we have a lot to be proud of. But this is a big year and depending on some of the decisions made by the board, we've got some challenges ahead of us. But I want to be able to promise them that we're going to do it the right way and communicate with them so that they aren't caught off guard and people are feeling like they're left hanging out there a little vulnerable without any information. So we'll work with you all. If you have any direct requests, you know, certainly let Jim know or, you know, let me know. But we've got the timeline built, we've got a lot of ideas sketched out. I think Ron and I are planning on within the next week or so to start digging into what that reduction list might look like. And then based on some of the feedback, we'll expand that conversation with the admin team and go from there.
And I appreciate Nikki and Olivia with GCDC. We, I wasn't talking about our situation, but they gave me an opportunity to just talk about school financing in general and how it works and how the referendum process is there and why it happens so much right now. And so anytime we can just talk about school funding in general, it certainly helps lay some groundwork for any questions that we would have that comes forward, so.
And it was one of our best-attended meetings in a while. So it was, people wanted to hear that information, so we appreciate that you came.
Ron's a popular guy.
Yes.
Does that meet the need?
Yeah, and Joe, I appreciate the thoughtfulness, right? Because these are going to be very difficult conversations. It, no matter what we do, this, this conversation is going to be difficult. When we're talking about what, what type of referendum we might have to bring forward, when we have to talk about the potential alternatives. And I think our, our staff is incredible. The culture we've built within the Monroe School District is incredible right now. So to protect that, that culture and, and that staff as we talk about these things that are going to be hard and painful and, and no one's really going to want to hear is, is important, so.
I think, Joe, just, you just made a comment there about, you know, whatever decision the board makes. I think I would be looking for clarity on what you as a, as a leader wants from us too. Are you looking for us to approve or say we're going to referendum for the number? And if that doesn't happen, you own the cuts? I think there needs to be clear, clarity, so it's not, I, we're either all in this together or we're defining what we own in this and what you as an admin team own too.
Sure, I would just say, based on the last go-around that we had, I felt really good about the process that was used in terms of the board making a determination about the number. And then the admin team owning the reduction plan.
How that reduction was made.
Yeah, exactly.
I thought that went well too, so I just want to make sure.
With, with feedback from the board, obviously, there's always an opportunity to get, get some insight from all of you. But I, I feel like that, that's a good way to clarify those roles. And, and we'll, we'll do everything we can to, to take care of the staff and also to be clear with the community in the process.
Hopefully, we won't have to get there.
That's right. When would we need to like know as far as going to referendum to get a yes group formed? Because I feel like that has been a big downfall in not having a group helping.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think we'll have to see what evolves within the community, right? In terms of how, what kind of support is generated there. I think from our perspective, to answer it more broadly, I think there's an interest, from what I've heard from the board and certainly from administration, for us to initiate this process sooner rather than later. Just from this conversation, we know that there's a number of things going on. You all have to decide the process to determine the next superintendent. We've got a school year that we're kicking off right now. We've got, you know, a potential referendum. And so from our perspective, Ron and I in particular, trying to be sensitive to everything that you all are managing as a board. But we're ready to get this conversation started at the next board meeting, if that's what you want. And I think as Teresa and some others said, you know, let's start with the timeline. Let's lay that out so you all have the full understanding of what that looks like. And then you guys can give us some feedback in terms of what you'd like to see going from there and, and we'll get that going. And then I think, again, one of the things that I'm most proud about since my time of sitting in the seat and working with the board is there's been a conscious intentional effort to be very clear with the community. And I think that needs to be front and center the whole time as we, we have these conversations to make sure that people know exactly what we're doing and why we're doing it. And, and I don't think that would be a problem. So we're, we're good to go. There's been a lot of planning right now and then getting that information out of the community will allow people to make a decision and go forward.
Just a question and clarity. You know, a, a support group like that, Terry, I, I don't believe like the board or the school district. That's got to be a community-driven thing. So it would not be sponsored by the district. Individual board members, if they wanted to contribute and work, could do that on their own, but.
Correct, but the thing is, we need to know whether we're going to referendum or not so that the community members can pursue that and get going on it. I'm just thinking back to when we had a successful referendum pass and it really had a lot to do about a really successful, community-driven yes group.
Yep, I just wanted to make that clarification.
Yep.
It's not something that the, the board or the district.
I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Appreciate the discussion, everybody. We'll pick up the timeline then at the next, at the first meeting in September. With that, we're going to have liaison reports. We're represented here tonight, therefore we move on to, oh, sorry, five minutes for the press. We're good there. I've got 8:28, so I'd look for a motion to adjourn from 8:28 PM. Nikki, second by Mike F. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
On Joe's name. Meeting is adjourned. Thanks, everyone.